Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Calling this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have seven exonerations for $2,042 minutes for September 15th, 2021. Vouchers: General County Fund, $280,299.65, 911, $13,671.15. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,027.24. Camp Muffley, $617.76. Mason Dixon Park, $1,024.83. Transportation Levy, $744,403.96. Recreation Levy, $40,000. Library Levy, $182,715.78. Assessor's Valuation, $4,443.74. Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County Fund, $5,896.79, 911, $944.64. Home Confinement, $7,635.41. And Assessor's Valuation, $95.45 for a voucher total of $1,284,992.40. We have a state approval general fund budget revision for the day report center. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. And fiduciary orders for September 22nd, 2021.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any separate fiduciary issues?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is introduction, new employees, personnel changes?
None that I know of.
Comments from the public. Now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody here in attendance would like to come up and address the commission? And see, none. Go ahead and close comments for the public. Moving right along. Colleen Coon, Grants.
Close.
I have requests for reimbursements for the Governor's Highway Safety Program. The first one is for clicker ticket and the amount of $847.19. The second one is for impaired driving and the amount of $3,428.59. And the last one is for safe communities and the amount of $740.11.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Renata?
The first is a press release that we received from the Friends of Cheat regarding a $1.1 million grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission for the Power Initiative Regarding Mountain Air Trail Network Recreation Authority.
Okay, that's good news.
And the second item is a report as prepared by Becca Fent Clark from the WVU Montague County 4-H Extension and her assistant Heather Tanton regarding their activities for the summer of 2021. Last item is a piece of mail that we received yesterday from an individual or a couple individuals out on Fairview Road, it's off the Grafton Road regarding a sewage issue that they've been having and with regarding proper or with an adjoining property. And they've contacted the Health Department and they've not received any, there's no resolution yet to that. So they were writing to you for assistance.
And they did contact me and I had them contact the state Health Department who then said, no, we'll get back to you, but contact the local Health Department. So right now, we're still trying to get an answer.
Okay, well, I'll take the action item to make sure that whoever at the Health Department is responding to these individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration to approve and order nunc pro tunc as the description of streets annulled, vacated, and abandoned on January 21, 2004 regarding 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th Streets. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, basically, this is the area over in Brookhaven where Tress Construction did Morningside and Morningside View. And back in 2004, the certain original roads were annulled and it's just basically a correction of three Scribner's errors in that order that basically annulled the wrong roads. And so this is a correction. And nunc pro tunc, I looked up because I didn't know what it was. It's a Latin expression basically meaning to retroactively correct an earlier ruling. So in case anyone was wondering, because I was. But that's all it is. Basically, right now, the way the assessor has the roads, they're going through several people's houses. So that alerted them to the correction that needed made. And so it's just basically adjusts the correct roads that need annulled and then re-brings one back on that was previously annulled that shouldn't have been number 20, I believe.
And then adds 14th.
Adds 14th, right.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider setting dates for first and second readings and public hearing regarding a resolution recommending approval by the Montague County Planning Commission of the request by Coal Train Corporation to amend the text of the West Run Planning District zoning ordinance. So we need to set dates. Renata, are you proposing certain dates?
Yeah. The first reading will be October the 6th. Second reading and public hearing will be October the 13th. And the Planning Commission will be advertising those two dates. We'll appear in a paper on September 29th and October 8th.
Okay, so hearing the two dates, do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the process and corresponding application to establish Montague County Orphan Road Grant Program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve and open for discussion?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Go ahead if you want.
Just this, we're really excited about this program that anyone that lives in this county on a rural road or an abandoned road knows that there's very little help to get it paid when it needs done, other than having all the homeowners chip in. So my fellow commissioners and I have come up with a plan to assist in those in the grant process and I'll let, I'll let you guys expand on it a little further, but we're real excited about it.
Okay, so I think we should probably read the-
Yes, that's what I thought.
It's not that, it's not that long, though.
Sure. Yeah, I think it's important.
Can you read the actual process for me?
Oh, boy. Okay.
Want someone else to read it?
Here.
Somebody read it?
No, I'll just pull it up on the-
I've got it here.
Is this the final?
Yeah. Well, that's the, that's-
Okay. How do you, where do you want me to start? You want me to read the entire thing?
Yes.
Okay. The Montague County Commission recognizes that the orphan road problem in Montague County is probably worse than anywhere else in the state. It is important to note that orphan roads are not a problem created by the state, its counties, or its municipalities. They were created when developers or individual property owners decided to build a structure, most often a residence, off a state road or outside of a municipality because the land was less expensive. There are little, if any, enforced building codes and there are fewer property taxes, permits, and fees. Some of these situations were historically addressed with the formation of homeowners associations, which were to maintain the community infrastructure. In almost all cases, these homeowners associations were undercapitalized and rarely, if ever, fully funded replacement, fully funded replacement reserves for the aging infrastructure. Fast forward a few decades, the roads began to deteriorate and in recent years have reached a crisis point where the health, welfare, and safety of residents are becoming threatened. A lot of these residents purchased these residences and have inherited a problem not necessarily of their own making. The MCC is committed to exploring options such as a countywide land use and subdivision regulation to help address these issues in the future. The orphan road problem is real and significant and is not going to fix itself. The MCC believes that if HOAs affected residents, the local contracted community, and the DOH are willing to work towards a collaborative and collective solution, that we, the Montague County Commission, would also be part of the solution and to that end have created an orphan road grant program. HOAs, citizens groups within Montague County whose access to their home or work is directly affected by deteriorated orphan road is eligible for funding. Procedures: HOA citizens group will make application to the Montague County Commission through its orphan road grant application. Bids and/or project designs from contractors should also be included with the grant application. The MCC will accept and review applications year round that align with the general grant requirements criteria outlined in the section below. All application documents must be submitted via email to info@montaguecounty.gov. Requirements would include: Number one, are there safety and/or security issues to be addressed by the proposed work? For instance, do emergency vehicles currently have trouble accessing the area because of deteriorated road conditions? Number two, do the deteriorating road conditions prevent access to vital services such as school, transportation, postal, or other delivery services and/or trash recycling pickup services and are being able to easily access the area? Number three, are there basic quality of neighborhood life issues caused by the current access infrastructure? For example, is the failing infrastructure creating a community hazard? Do alternative ingress egress routes create unsafe conditions? Number four, do the grant applicants document a commitment to a local level of participation? This commitment could be through funding, in-kind services, ingress or egress concessions, any other tangible or intangible contributions, or any combination of the above? Number five, what are the number of households benefited by the proposed improvements? Number six, the Commission envisions any successful grant award as a one-time contribution to correct the subject infrastructure deficiencies. Does the applicant have a plan to maintain the infrastructure in the future? Number seven, is there Montague County Planning Commission agreement with the proposed improvements and are the improvements in line with their local regulations? Number eight, are there Department of Highways agreements with the proposed improvements and are the improvements in line with their specifications? My county commission contributions: Grant funds will be awarded as a one-time contribution. MCC funds will be issued directly to the contractor upon receipt of invoices. Future maintenance: HOA citizens groups must present a maintenance plan for further maintenance of the road. The grant program is intended only to address the initial fix of the program, not to be a continuing obligation for maintenance. The goal for this program is to get the project, the initial improvements it needs, whereas without the program, the road would otherwise never be improved.
Thank you, Renata. I know I should have warned you that I was going to ask you to say that and you've kind of taken your mask off.
Oh, thanks.
I think we could say a bunch of words, but I think the process speaks for itself and what our intent was. Tom, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want it real clear and when Renata and I were talking yesterday, this is for roads that have already been there and have had problems and we're trying to resolve it. It isn't for a future where we're, and I want it real clear, that we're trying to build new roads or get involved in that. This is for roads where there've been problems and we're working out solutions.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. To consider for discussion and approval, a proposal submitted on behalf of the Bridge Road and Pinecrest-Farmview Road communities to the Montague County Orphan Road Grant Program. And I'd like to go ahead and just separate these, so-
Yes.
In regards to, let's take the alphabetical order. In regards to the Bridge Road project, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. This, the full amount-
Yes.
-there requesting from the commission and it, I guess maybe amend our, our motion to include the amount-
Yes.
Is $67,000.
Approved to amend.
Second.
Second, okay. This is an area which again is a, the projects that have come forward and actually contacted us and as we were working through these problems, we developed this process. So I want to thank these communities for actually bringing these issues forward. They were very well organized. There's a number of HOAs and individuals in that area that are working together on this. Total households affected is 49. HOA reserve has 27 households and eight, I'm sorry. The reserve has 27 households and Stonewood has 19 households directly. And then there's private outside of HOA, three households that have contributed funding for, for this program. So the total cost of the project to fix the road, and that's from 119 down to, into the development. And Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Arnett, we did site visits to this thing. We were very adamant about trying to make sure what we are work, what we are fixing was inherently the quasi-government part of the road and not necessarily fixing HOA property. So that's what we focused in on this one. There's a heavy lift to get the road off of, off of 119 corrected and that's why this one is fairly, fairly expensive. But, and I asked Mike Davis to come, but I guess he wasn't able to make it from Department of Highways. He came out and, and visit with us and as, through that discussion, he's carrying a conversation on with the HOA to correct that, that knoll right there by that, that mini-mark and fix some of those problems, which supposedly whenever they put that mini-mark in, there was a permit and they were supposed to have corrected that, but it never occurred. And that's kind of what happens with these things. There's, you know, either whether it's an HOA or a development that doesn't have an HOA, there's usually an intent to do certain things in the beginning, but then once the development's built and people move on-
Forget about it, yeah.
Yes, it never happens. So that's why this, this is a very good application. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The second applicant is Pinecrest-Farmview Road and they submitted very good input regarding, and theirs is probably the case study of why we want to do this type of stuff. So first of all-
Moved, moved to approve.
The amount is-
Of?
The amount that they're requesting is $44,000.
$44,000.
Second.
Second, yes.
I would also like to move to suspend the rules to allow, if you would like to speak, because I think you're, I agree with Sean. It was because of your action and consistent persistence and explaining, got everybody together. And you might want to just explain why this is so important.
Okay, so we have a motion to allow Mr. Carl Marion from the Development-
Carl, I'd like to-
Come speak to us.
Yeah.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So welcome.
Yes, Carl.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here and represent Pinecrest Village Homeowners Association. And you're right, Pinecrest, I always refer to Farmview Road as being our director of first impressions because that is the introduction of anyone wanting to come into the neighborhood, looking at properties to purchase, you know, visiting families, friends, so on and so forth. That road was established a number of years ago. Apparently, the area where Pinecrest is currently was originally a dump and then the dump was cleared out and became a trailer park and then a trailer park was cleared out and Pinecrest was established. And so the road originally was concrete, so there's a series of slabs that have broken over the years and they're kind of almost like a tectonic plate study right now, kind of juxtaposition on each other and different angles. And sometimes people actually go around their lane to get out away from the bumpiness of the road. And so there, there are a number of other developments in there, too. Apartments and another new subdivision, along with private ownership out there, too. And so with that, you know, it was, it was challenging to get everybody together to try to get the amount of money needed to do that section coming down from 119 at the Circle K, down to the Pinecrest Development. And that's the part that we had requested the funds for. And we greatly appreciate the county commission in considering doing something like this. And we're, we're pleased to be kind of the, one of the initial groups to do this, to help develop the process and to, you know, be able to show what can be done. And if you want to use us as kind of like a brainchild of why this-
We plan.
Project.
And some of the numbers from, from your application that you submitted, there are 400 homes that are affected by the single entrance, single point of entry for all these homes.
Homes and apartments.
And those are things that, you know, as we're going forward, we should look for in regard, in regards to developments and making sure we don't have a single point of entry, that we have, you know, multiple exit, in exits. I mean, in, entrance and exits. But Pinecrest Village has 70 homes, Farm Brook has 18 homes, Farmview Road has approximately six homes, Pinnacle Town Homes has 24 homes, and then Pinnacle Apartments has approximately 200 apartments. So that area, and as Carl, as you pointed out, in 1995, there was only 80 homes. Now there's over 400. When the, when the DOH guy was there, he goes, where did all these homes come from?
Yes.
That itself tells you that there should, there was some sort of, you know, there should be a higher level review to, to keep that from happening. But, and it's not just money. You guys, the whole project, the whole project is 87,300. And you guys, you're asking for 44 and you raised the rest from, from those individuals. And there is even in-kind contributions where Pinnacle Apartments agreed to change their, their entrance and their exit just to improve the safety of the, of the whole project. So I really commend all of you guys for working, you, Denise, Patrick, all the guys that came and talked to us. And you were the first. You were the first to come and actually talk to us and give us, give us a unique challenge that we felt that we should, should be part of and should address. And hopefully, many others will benefit from this going forward. But thank you very much, Carl. Really appreciate it.
You're quite welcome.
And I want to admit, I was very hesitant to do this because it opens up concerns. But, you know, I have to give Sean and Jeff credit. They said, we need to try and come up with something. And we came up now with a process and an application and, and I think it's really valid. Now, we will try and do, and I want to clear, we can't do everyone's because there's going to be an amount of money that we're going to have to set aside. But we can do it each year. And, and I agree, because of your persistence and every time we asked you to do something, you got our, the information. So I'm real glad that we're able to move forward on this.
Appreciate that. And when you consider the fact that each one of those homes more than likely represents multiple cars-
Mm-hmm.
And a number of trips in and out each day.
Yeah.
So it's not just the number of homes, it's the amount of traffic literally on the road.
Two to three cars per.
And DOH vowed to go back and take a look at that intersection because it's a very weird intersection. You have a four-way and if you're coming up, you take an immediate turn down. If you're trying to get out of there, you're, it's, it's, I don't know what they would call it, illegal, I think is a bad, bad word, but DOH wouldn't design anything like that today.
No. I think one other thing that the public doesn't understand that we were able to do, DOH has given us an individual to act as advisory. And for example, sight, line of sight, is it?
Line of sight.
That they were able to say, look, if we, we now can do this and with the DOH's help, we can go to the owner and say, look, could you help us? And that's worked out really well, too.
And we want DOH to be a partner.
Yes.
We want the Planning Commission to be a partner, again, to take a look at this and again, put more eyes on this than the developers may be considering or the HOAs may be considering, to make sure that we're doing this in a smart way so we're getting the best use of these dollars. So really appreciate it. Jeff, do you have anything?
Nothing else.
We also were fortunate in that we have water runoff drainage established.
Yes.
And so this paving does not create any new water runoff challenges or doesn't dump on somebody's property or, you know, create future challenges as well.
Yeah, because we had one project that we were looking at-
We had to hold off.
Where we have to hold off going forward because if we did help with the paving, it would just cause problems down the road because it would just create a nice sheet, you know, to, for all that water to run onto somebody else's property. So we're trying to look at this in a smart way and not, you know, not throw dollars away to get the best bang out of the buck.
Well, and to help you all, I would encourage any future applicants to go ahead and do their due diligence in having multiple quotes-
Yeah.
Available for you beforehand.
Yep, we put all that in our, so as, we went backwards with you. You guys brought us something and then we said, yeah, how about this, how about this, how about this? But going forward, people will be able to look at the process and check, check all those boxes off before he even gets to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We greatly appreciate your assistance.
All right, thanks. Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Very good.
All right. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Anybody want to report? Okay, no one? Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, first, food, big food giveaway at Mylan Park this weekend at our extension building and it's, you don't get out of your car. It's a drive-through, a drive-by, I like to call it. I had a meeting yesterday at U Services Center and I'm real excited to tell the public that we were reviewed by both the state and the federal for licensing. And not only did we pass, but they've asked us to talk to some of the other centers in the state because they felt we were a model. And that, a lot of credit to MJ and her staff, and I really want to congratulate on that. And finally, Saturday is the vote for continued levy. And hope you vote for it. That's it.
Attended the UHS Homecoming Parade last night. I didn't go to UHS, but my, my kids are involved there. Just wanted to thank the city of Morgantown for all their presence in keeping everybody in line and everyone safe. They were, you couldn't turn a corner without running into a city policeman or an officer of some type. A couple of deputy sheriffs were out there, too. So it was, it was real nice to see. It was a very well-run event and everything went off without a hitch, so.
Thanks, Jeff. Since last meeting, last Thursday, had Mylan Park Foundation Executive Committee meeting. Friday, had staff reports and a broadband initiative, full team meeting. And Saturday was the Virginia Tech game. So it was interesting to, to remember what a football Saturdays, or football Friday and football Saturdays like around this town. So it appears that so far, things went off without a hitch and hopefully, we'll continue that trend. Monday, I had a, the Aquatic Track Center management team got together for a, it was a four-hour work session to talk about the Aquatic Track Center and the future going forward. And it was very, very useful. Thanks to Commissioner Arnett for attending. Tom, I know that you had other obligations, but hopefully, you got a little bit of a view of, you know, the challenges posed in making sure that that facility is successful. Today's a regular day with work sessions. We have our work session tonight with the city.
I'm very excited.
I'm surprised, go ahead.
No, I'm very excited. We have nine issues and why I'm excited is we recommended three or four and they came back with some issues that I was surprised we're going to be able to talk about because some people could say it as controversial. I think it's more that we have different points of view, but let's just say that they came up with their art planning last night and I'm sure that that'll be also part of discussion. But I'm very excited. It's 6:30. It is streamed live and it will be here and I'm really looking forward to it. We have Mub people coming, we have Russ and Eric coming, we have from the CVB tourism coming. So we have a packed group of good information tonight.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for organizing. Tomorrow, I have my monthly breakfast with Joe Statler and Ron Lidle from the Board of Education. And Friday, I have a early morning breakfast with some constituents and then we have staff reports. I do want to extend deepest sympathy to Sheriff Perry Palmer and our chief tax deputy, Kelly Palmer, who lost their mother this week. Our thoughts are with you. I also want to mention Dr. Lee Smith, his, his wife's mother of 92 years succumbed to COVID. So as much as Dr. Smith has done to save thousands of lives of people that, in this county, to still have it hit your own doorstep is, is sobering. And hopefully, people will, will see that and, and take the steps that need to be taken to hopefully get themselves vaccinated or continue to protect, protect themselves and their families from, from this dreaded disease. I do want to remind people of the stakeholders meeting for our broadbander stakeholders meeting next week. That's Wednesday night at 6 o'clock at the Extension Building. The meeting will be virtual and in person. I sincerely want to thank my fellow commissioners and the public for their assistance with this orphan road grant program. I think that this is a very forward-thinking effort by the Commission and to address the symptoms of unmanaged growth in our county and I hope we can continue this conversation. Lastly, I would just like to wish my wife a happy 21st anniversary today.
I thought you were saying 24th birthday.
Happy anniversary.
Move to-
Move to a jern?
Jern.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.